I'm going to ask the first question of the group. And we'll throw it open to the four people up on stage. Anybody who wants to jump in on this question, please do. The first question of the day is, how do we make sure that we are producing a workforce with the skills employers need? Anybody want to take that? Please jump in. How do we make sure we're producing a workforce with the skills employers need?
I'll start. The best way we can make sure that we're producing the employees that employers are looking for is to have great conversations with the private sector. And if we're doing this in a vacuum, whether at the K-12 level, at the community college level, at the higher ed level, then we're not going to get there. And what's been amazing to me as I talk to CEOs around the country is that in these tough economic times with high unemployment rates, we have about 2 million high-wage, high-skill jobs that are going unfilled. So we have to break these barriers. Part of the reason I'm here, and I'd love to have you guys elaborate on this, is we think ACC is doing an extraordinary job of building those public-private partnerships, of having that conversation, of moving very rapidly when you're here and you need to do some things in different ways. And again, the example you're setting, we think, has implications not just for this local community, but for the country.
I would just add to that, you know, the spirit of collaboration that exists in Austin between the community college and our other sectors of education, as well as business and industry, and our tech companies, and throughout the chambers, our nonprofit groups, you know, the spirit of collaboration that exists right here is what allows us to be responsive and to react to the community, and to be nimble, to be agile, and to meet the needs, the training needs, and the future skill needs. And so I thank you for what you just said, because that kind of reinforces the fact that we think that we're doing our job. We always have to get better, but thank you.
I hold a rather unusual position in that I have one foot in academics, one foot in the business community, as leading a financial cooperative that serves the higher education community here in Austin. And that's a vantage point that's been helpful to me in connecting the two. That's what I try to do through my role here on this platform. In addition, I chair a task force that the Chamber of Commerce pulled together years ago that is trying to do exactly what was asked here. It's identify the needs in the business community, jobs that exist or will exist in the future, and then try to match those to what ACC is able to produce in the way of outcomes. And students that come here wanting to become educated, wanting a positive livelihood, a productive livelihood on the other side of that event. One of the things that we do through this task force, we've got about a dozen businessmen, businesswomen who meet regularly with ACC. And if you'll bear with me, let me take about 30 seconds and tell you the things that we've targeted, is opportunities for ACC and we to partner together. We're trying to target overall and allied health program completion rates to meet the needs that the Texas Workforce Commission is projected for Central Texas. By 2015, we're trying to produce at least 90% of projected technology talent needs that exist in Central Texas. There are a lot of jobs in the high-tech sector right now that are going unfilled because we don't have qualified people to take them. We're trying to improve student success rates by 50% over the next 10 years. Successes measured different ways, and we're partnering with Dr. Rhodes on what that means. We're trying to increase enrollment projections to almost 50,000 by 2015. It looks to me like ACC is going to be there on that. Increasing enrollment projections, I'm sorry, partnering with business to secure accurate data about the industry needs that exist here. Sometimes it's hard to pull together that information. Adopting a framework through which ACC can report its successes to the community, because in the bottom line is, we want to be advocates for ACC. When ACC goes to tax an area, to open new campuses, and draw new students to the college, we want to be a part of that and help the college grow. And so that's what we're trying to do through this. We see the, probably the most critical decision made in Central Texas with respect to higher education in the last two years has been the hiring of this man. And we have a winner in him. We're backing him 100%, and we're grateful to be a part of this today. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to echo Secretary Duncan's comments and just say, first, I want to thank you for the tremendous hospitality. I've had a tremendous visit here today, and I want to give a shout out to the wonderful students, faculty, and business leaders that participated in the roundtable. You're an inspiration to all of us with all your dedicated service. But what I was really impressed with, Arnie, when I met with the business leaders, was how responsive this institution is. And that's why we're here, really, to listen and learn from all of you. And the fact that you can turn around some curriculum redesign in three weeks is really what the business community is looking for. And so that's why we're here, to learn from you. How do you do it? How do you get the business community engaged and involved to make sure we can be responsive and nimble and fill those jobs that are going unfilled today?
Fantastic. Great opening remarks. And now we're going to take questions from the audience, as we said, so put your hands up and we'll call on you. Let's go right here first, please.
My questions are, why is this important that people are exposed to the arts? And what role do you think the arts play in global competitiveness?
Giving young children exposure is so critically important. And we all know the ties between the arts and math and science and those kinds of things. But for me, it's not just about better academic achievement. It's giving students a chance to build their sense of self-esteem, find out what they're passionate about. And I worry desperately in these tough economic times that so often the arts get cut. And so we're pushing hard against districts that find the easy answers to cut out arts. And whether it's dance, or drama, art, and music, or whether it's sports, or whether it's band, or whether it's yearbook, or debate, or robotics, I just think every child should have a menu of high-quality options, and let them figure out what their passion is. And when they do that, they stay engaged in school, they don't drop out, they continue their education. When we eliminate those things that we call extracurricular, students start to disengage from school, and the dropout rate goes up. We have to get the dropout rate down to zero as fast as we can. We have to make sure that everyone graduates from high school, college, and career-ready. I think the arts are a great, great path. And is everyone going to be a concert pianist, or go to the Joffrey Belet? Probably not. But if they can pursue those skills, those passions, and then help them do well in other areas, that's what this is about. I think that's why the arts are so critical. And so we're doing anything we can to push back against district and states in tough economic times, think the easy answers to eliminate the arts and the extracurriculars.
You've got the microphone. Let me call on somebody over here, and then I'm going to come right back to you next. I know you think I'm not going to call on you, but I swear I am. Let's go over here, please, in the front row. Gentlemen, right there.
Mr. Secretary, my name is Jason Shaw, Austin student. I'm a student at ACC here. And I'm just looking at my notes here real quick, if I can. I'm the president of RESA, which is Renewable Energy, it's the renewable solar energy society. And first of all, thank you for coming to Austin Community College and to hear from my students. I've been an unemployed electrician for nearly three years. And I want to say a big thanks to Austin Community College, because I was recently hired by REC Solar to work on the Temple VA solar PV project. I've been through continuing education, college credit, renewable energy program. And I'm concerned about the clean energy education in general. So my question is, Mr. Secretary, in what ways will the Department of Education and Department of Labor help Austin Community College, both continuing education and credit programs, work with big businesses and organizations to best fit both those programs with the training and educational needs to match the actual future occupations' needs?
First of all, just thank you so much for your courage. And this is a tough, tough economic climate. And when you get laid off, that's a devastating thing to have happen in your life. And one of the reasons I'm so inspired by my visits to community colleges, I see so many people who have been through very tough times, but they didn't quit, they didn't give up, they came back. And whether it's green energy jobs, whether it's healthcare jobs, whether it's IT jobs, they're coming back to get real training from community colleges. So you're doing things exactly the right way. And those are the jobs of the future. And I'm just convinced as families get back on their feet, the country's going to get back on its feet. And I think community colleges have this extraordinarily important role to play in that process. So what are we doing very specifically to try and help, not just around green energy, but around healthcare and IT and, you know, everything else? First of all, we have a great partnership with the Department of Labor, something called the Trade Assistance Act, $2 billion. And we put out $500 million last year. We're putting out the RFP. When, Brenda?
It's already out. The applications are due May 24th.
Applications due May 24th. I encourage you guys to look at it. Another $500 million this year. And we are only going to fund places where there's a real public-private partnership, where the training at the community colleges is leading to real jobs in that community. And it might be solar energy here, might be something else in Miami, it might be something else in Minnesota, but where you have those local ties with the business community, that's what we want to invest in. So we're going to come back each of the next three years with another round of $500 million to put behind that. That's guaranteed. Then going forward in our budget, the president has asked for an additional $8 billion to invest in community colleges, that we would work, again, in partnership with the Department of Labor. So we're trying to shine an unprecedented spotlight on the working community colleges, whether it's the first White House summit, whether it's unprecedented resources. Again, we just think community colleges are vital for families, for communities, and for the country. So we're trying to lead by example, put our money where our mouth is.
Dr. Rhodes? Should pick up on what Secretary Duncan said. Will you talk about how important, in your mind, it is for the federal government to invest in community colleges? A lot of controversy about whether a state like Texas should be taking money from the federal government to begin with. But Secretary Duncan references support for community colleges. Talk about, from your perspective, the importance of that, please.
Critical role, because it's a critical partnership for the nation and for the state of Texas and for community colleges. And whether we're talking about Pell Grants and financial aid, and the ability for students to continue their education and to get into their education, or whether it's taking a look at some of the job skills acts that are coming out, to allow retraining, whether it's customized training, or for-credit, or adult basic education, whatever the area of development, we have to take a look at the full spectrum of a student, from where they enter a community college, and where we can help them exit into employment or into a transfer program. But that doesn't happen in isolation within a state. It happens in collaboration and partnership with the federal government. And again, I just want to express our thanks, because you have been supportive of Pell Grants, you've been supportive of Perkins Funding, that helps to put new equipment into our programs, such as what was just talked about, or what Brenda had the opportunity to tour, in our allied health programs, our nursing allied health programs. Because of your support of things like Perkins and the student support wraparound services, and the TRIO programs, we just thank you, the Title V programs. It is critical to the future of the community college to have that type of support behind us.
Thank you, Dr. Rhodes. My very patient friend over here in the middle. Ma'am.
Thank you so much. My name is Jessica Reeves. I'm a student in the teacher education program here at ACC. I'm also an international student. My question is, as you all probably know, we are facing a teacher attrition crisis in this country, where one in five teachers, as they are, sorry, teachers that enter the profession stay an average of only five years. So what can we do here at ACC to prepare future teachers to work within a system that they often feel is working against them? Thank you.
First of all, thank you so much, and it's one of my favorite topics. I'll take a minute on this. Let me just talk about the demographic change. So we have a baby boomer generation that's moving towards retirement. And over the next four to six years, we're going to lose about a million teachers, about 3.2, 3.3 million teachers. So our ability to attract and retain great talent over these next couple of years is going to shape public education for the next 30. It's literally a once-in-a-generation opportunity. So we're spending a huge amount of our time this year, and hopefully for the next five years, really thinking about how we elevate the teaching profession. So we lose, and there are huge challenges here. We lose far too many great young teachers who don't get the support, and you talk about the attrition. We lose them because they don't feel they have the classroom management skills. We lose them when they get to 27, 28, and want to start a family, and think they can't afford to buy a house, or to, you know, get married and have a family. We don't bring in the best and brightest into teaching too often. We discourage that. And so we have to fundamentally elevate the teaching profession in a whole host of ways. So I've been very public, not everyone agrees with me. I think we should double starting teacher salaries. I think we should pay teachers a heck of a lot more on money. A great teacher should make a lot more money, not at 55 or 60, but at 30 and 32. Again, pick a number, $130, $140, $150,000. We have no good schools in this country. I've been to hundreds and hundreds of schools. We have now, I've never seen a good school yet. I keep looking, that doesn't have a great principal. So principal leadership matters a lot, and we have to really recognize and support that. But what we've done in this country is we have beaten down educators, we've demonized educators. And in other countries, they are revered. And I talk to my counterparts across the globe all the time. In other countries, it's doctors, lawyers, engineers, and teachers, all at the same status level. We have doctors, lawyers, engineers here, and teachers down here. That doesn't make sense. So we want to elevate the profession, we want to strengthen the profession, we want to bring in the hardest-working and most committed, we want to give them real career ladders, we want to support them. If it's not working, we want to deal with that openly and honestly, and move them out, not have them stay in the classroom for the next 30 years. But if we can do this well, we change public education for the next 30. So the president talked about this in the State of the Union. We're asking for $5 billion for Congress to start what we're calling this Respect Project. You can look it up on our website. Our money will be, frankly, a relatively small investment. But I look at this country like South Korea that's out-educating us now, it's really interesting. They call their teachers nation builders. It's a really, I think, deep concept. Well, I think our teachers are nation builders, but we don't treat them as such, we don't respect them as such, we don't revere them as such, we don't support them as such. So we have to look at the entire pipeline. It's not just what ACC can do. How do we have much better teacher training? How do we bring in much better talent? How do we better support them going forward? And how do we build a career where folks want to stay? And the final thing I'll say is, no one goes into education to make a million dollars. Teachers are the most altruistic folks I know. But they shouldn't have to take a vow of poverty either. You should be able to have a middle-class life and be a great, great teacher. And somehow, our priorities have gotten out of whack. So this has got to be a fundamental transformational change, not tinkering around the edges. We're challenging everybody to sort of come outside their comfort zones and partner with us going forward. But if we do this well, again, we change things for the next generation. It's an amazing opportunity.
We have a question in the back.
From upstairs.
From upstairs. Excellent. Thank you for coming downstairs.
Excuse me, I'm a little nervous. My name is Carlos Charles. I'm a student here at ACC, and also a representative of the Men in Distinction Program, which is a program to help out African-American males to succeed, and it's truly changed my life around here. When I was in the high school stages of my life, I was told that I don't need to go to college, you know? They said, I don't want to have the grades, I want to get the scores, and stuff like that. I was wondering, what is the government doing to remote minority education? What kind of stuff, new steps and new techniques are you guys doing?
Well, first of all, anyone who said that to you did you a grave disservice. And I think so much what we're fighting in this country is a culture of low expectations. And whether it's minority men, whether it's English-language learners, whether it's children who live in poor communities, somehow, as a nation, we haven't really believed that these young people could do extraordinarily well. And I'm just very fortunate to have grown up in a family that worked in the inner city and grew up with a bunch of young folks who didn't have a lot of money and didn't come with the best backgrounds, who went on to do amazing things because my mother and others were in their lives. So I've been able to see that firsthand. It's not about who you are, where you come from, or your family's income, or dysfunction or dysfunctionality. It's all about opportunity. And so we have to systemically get better opportunity to the children, to the communities who have been historically underserved. We have a long, long way to go in this country. We just put out earlier this week, and hopefully folks will see this, the civil rights data collection data, that's pretty disturbing. And it sort of confirms everything we know, but 70,000 schools, 85% of young people, black and brown children get suspended at much higher rates, have much less access to rigorous classes in high school, special ed students are disciplined at twice the rate. We found we have 15% of high schools that have no guidance counselors, none. How is that possible when we're trying to, again, have more young folks go on to college? So what are we doing specifically? First of all, we've put a huge amount of resources to put behind schools that were historically dropout factories. And not into the status quo, but into transforming those schools. These are school improvement grants, over $4 billion. And you're seeing some radical changes in schools that historically had the majority of students dropping out, and there's no chance for success there going forward. Secondly, we've tried to replicate Jeffrey Canada's extraordinary work in the Harlem Children's Zone, and try and build wraparound services around schools. We need great teachers, we need great principals, but in very disadvantaged communities, we need a whole network of supports before school, after school, for parents. We're trying to put significant resources there. Finally, we talked about teachers, and this is why I would challenge all schools of education, we just lack diversity now in our teaching workforce. And we need great talent, but I want that talent just to reflect the great diversity of our nation's students. So right now, less than 2%, less than 1 in 50 of our teachers is a black man. Less than 2% is Latino man. And then we wonder why our young boys of color struggle. And so we're trying to challenge everybody to attract great talent, have it reflect what our nation's children look like, and to bring them into education. We have a website, teach.gov, this is pushing this very, very hard. We're working to get funded something called the Hawkins Schools of Excellence, to get HBCUs more resources, to produce more teacher talent. So we have a lot of hard work here. The final thing I'll say is, we've had so many disincentives in this country for the hardest-working, the most committed teachers and principals to go to underserved communities, be that inner-city, urban, or rural. And we have to fundamentally change that. Again, not everyone agrees, but I think we need a lot more resources for folks willing to take on the toughest of assignments. We need a lot more resources for math and science teachers. We've had a shortage for three decades. We're either going to keep admiring the problem, or we're going to do something about it. So none of this stuff is easy, none of this stuff is self-correcting, but we're trying to challenge the status quo in some very, very significant ways.
Let me ask the Assistant Secretary if I can bring her into this conversation. The questioner's point is interesting, because the incentives to go through secondary, or higher education, really exist at different levels. Different students need different things. You have a lot of kids who come right out of school, you have some who don't go back to school until much later, you have a lot of non-traditional students. What is the administration or the department doing specifically to target people who might not go down the conventional path, come out of high school and go right into college?
So thanks for asking that question. Of course, we have our career and technical education system, and the secretary and the administration is really spending a lot of time and effort to transform our career and technical education, so that students who want to go right away to work are prepared for work on day one, and they're also prepared for college. And so that's going to be an enormous effort to transform our whole career and technical education, also to be responsive to the business community, to make sure that the limited federal resources we have are targeted to high-growth, high-wage, high-demand industries. So I think you'll see in a few weeks that the secretary will be announcing our new blueprint for the transformation of career and technical education, so that we can serve students who need to go to work right away, and not necessarily go to college, but they'll be ready for work on day one.
Excellent. You know, in addition to that
Dr. Rhodes.
Is you know, to respond to the question, we can't depend on the federal government to resolve those problems. We have an opportunity, and we have a responsibility in our own communities, to make a change and to make a difference. And to make that happen, to give opportunities, and it happens through working in collaboration, that collaborative spirit between community college, universities, our K-12, pre-K-12 partners, business community, everybody coming together to say, we've got to change the pathways and the patterns of students, and we've got to provide opportunities. And I'll give you a good example, and that's early college high schools, or dual credit in high schools, is opening up new doorways, new opportunities, new pathways for students who are not expected to go to college, not encouraged to go to college, but to have the experience of a college class, and to feel that, by golly, they can be successful at the rigor of a college class, and they do have a future that they can go on, and at a lower cost by taking dual credit in the high school. Do we have some kids here from our early college high schools?
That's great.
Yes.
They're doing that.
They are how we are going to change in Austin, Texas, the demographics of the community. And so thank you for being here, kids.
And if I might just add, in addition to the, if you have also dropped out of school, an adult had to go back, had to go to work to prepare for your family, we have a very robust adult education system that will assist you when you want to come back to get your GED and then go on to college. I went to some adult education classes this morning, that the students are highly motivated to get their GED and come on to college. So I also wanted to put a plug in for our very robust adult education system.
Because in this, the 21st century, town hall meetings are often conducted with questions from Twitter. So I have a question from Twitter that I actually have to read. The question is from someone on Twitter whose Twitter name is Avance, and the question is, "Many parents can't afford to pursue higher education. How is college affordability resolved so low-income families can attend?" I want to ask Mr. Bedet to start and end to the secretary, because we're in a state where this issue is very much on everyone's minds. Governor called for a $10,000 college education, including books, in his state-of-the-state last year. Cuts to the state financial aid program, Texas Grants, happened during the last session. A lot of families in this state want to send their kids to school, don't necessarily have the resources to do it. How do you deal with college affordability?
Well, I may not be best qualified to address that. From the business standpoint and in the role that I hold, we very carefully work with students and their parents as they come to a town like Austin, and they're exploring this, and we try to counsel them as best we can. The federal government is running most of that program today. We do offer some private loans that will enable people to attend college. But in terms of the cost of college itself, I'm not sure the business community has a lot to say about that, although
Well, I know the secretary will have something to say, so let's take it down to him. Ms. Secretary.
So this is a huge issue, and this is, I've traveled the country with the president and with the vice president. Let me be clear, it's not just low-income folks who are struggling. We go to many, many middle-class communities, and parents are starting to think that college isn't for them. It's for rich folks. It's not for people who look like them and come from their community. So this is a huge, huge challenge. Let me tell you what we're trying to do. One of the things I'm most proud of is we increased Pell Grants by $40 billion, $40 billion. And we did that without going back to taxpayers for nickel. We simply stopped subsidizing banks, which we didn't think needed our money, put all that money into young people. That was that was very controversial in Washington. We thought it was common sense. We got it done. There are folks in Congress who want to roll that back, and we're going to fight that tooth and nail. But we're so thrilled that we've gone from, two years ago, 6 million young people around the country who have access to Pell Grants, to 9 million, it's a 50% increase, and Pell Grants are all-time high. So that's a significant step in the right direction. We're trying to increase Perkins Loans going forward. We have something in place called Income-Based Repayment, IBR, that on the back end, we're reducing your loan repayments each month, so if you make more money, you pay more, if you make less money, you pay less. And I should have said this for our teachers, for our teachers, for our public servants, for folks working at a healthcare clinic, a legal aid clinic. After 10 years of public service, all your debt is erased, is forgiven. So it's a huge, huge step in the right direction. We are proposing the budget to double work-study opportunities. We're trying to make permanent the American Opportunity Tax Credit, which is $2,500 each year. So we're pushing it at every level we can. But let me be clear, we can't do this by ourselves. And this is all about shared responsibility. States have to step up and invest at every level of education, early childhood, K-12, higher ed. And again, regardless of politics or ideology, we saw 40 states last year, 40 states cut funding to higher education. That's not where we need to go, on either party. And we need universities to keep their tuitions down. And we have universities that are doing the right thing, we want to reward that. Where tuition is skyrocketing much faster than the rate of inflation, we can't support that. So part of the budget proposal is a race atop for higher education, $5 billion, to incentivize states to continue to invest, to incentivize universities to keep tuition down, and to make sure it's not just about access, it's got to be about completion. It's got to be around attainment. So Pell students, first-generation college goers. So we are trying to walk the walk. Please hold us accountable. But again, we need states to step up to the plate, and we need universities to do the same thing. Part of the reason I love community colleges is they are so affordable. And with a Pell Grant in many places, you can almost go for free. And I think, again, the value that community colleges are providing to the country is simply extraordinary.
Thank you, Ms. Secretary. I'm going to go in the back here. Woman right there in red on the aisle, please. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Rosemary Kelly. I'm director of Guidance and Counseling for Round Rock ISD, and I also have the privilege of serving as the chair of the Crest Committee that's supported by the Austin Chamber. Secretary Duncan, you just briefly mentioned the role of guidance counselors in the success of students. And I wonder if you would comment on the role of, what we call in Texas, school counselors, their role in helping students prepare for college and career and how we can own the turf.
Well, I think it's just a hugely important role. And again, to find that around the country, 15% of schools don't have a social worker, don't have a counselor. I know in many places, the caseloads are way out of whack, you know, 700, 800 students. But to not have access there, again, just makes no sense to me whatsoever. And I know budgets are really, really tough, you know, these are tough economic times. But when we're making hard cuts, we've got to be smart about what we cut and what we invest more in. And I was lucky, I had two college-educated parents, they could sort of help me negotiate the process of going to college, which wasn't easy for me. But for a child who's new to this country, for a child who's learning English, for a child who doesn't have a family member that's gone to college, to not have that guidance counselor in their life, I think that's a devastating loss of opportunity. So we do need to do everything we can to support that local investment. Obviously, you can use our federal funds, but we need folks to understand that the guidance counselors, the social workers are foundational to helping students who are at risk take that next step in the education journey. We can't walk away from that.
Okay, we have a question over here to the side, then I'm going to take one from the back there. So you all in the back, get ready.
Thank you, Evan.
Mr. Dochin.
Yes, Mr. Smith. Mr. Secretary, I'm Sandy Dochin with IBM here in Austin. And you mentioned the folks who your mom worked with. And I had the pleasure of working on a three-week assignment last year with Carrie Holly, a good friend of yours, who thinks of your mom as her, as his second mom. And so that's a great example of the kind of folks you were describing a minute ago. I just want to mention that IBM, in collaboration with the New York City School System last year, and Queens Community College, and a technology institution, opened a school, a grade nine-through-14 school in New York, and five are coming to Chicago this fall with other companies involved. And these kids will go through a STEM-oriented sort of a major and be looked at for, you know, kind of preferential jobs in the IT industry to better prepare them and then go on to get their fourth year. The nine-through-14 concept, I know a lot of cities in Texas, school districts have this, and I think you all at ACC are looking at this with the Austin School District. I think it just makes a lot of sense, economic sense, and great for the young people. Is that something you all are encouraging, Mr. Secretary, at the federal level?
No, I'm so thrilled with your guys' leadership. I need to come out and visit one of the schools. But I was literally with Mayor Bloomberg and Mayor Emanuel a couple of days ago, and they were both trying to out-brag each other about bringing IBM to their city. So your guys stepping up there is huge. But these nine-to-14 academies, with a focus on the STEM fields, with so many jobs, preparing students for the next level in college or for a real job, it's a huge, huge step in the right direction. I think historically, what we've done in education, we've also pointed fingers and laid blames. So business blamed, you know, educators for not having students ready, educators said business was divorced from reality. You guys are stepping into that gap and providing real, strong skills that are going to lead young people to a whole new world of opportunity that never existed. So I think it's just a brilliant concept. Please thank your colleagues for IBM's leadership here. We love that mayors are starting to compete for your resources. We love the example you set for other corporate partners to step up in this place. And again, we give lots of lip service to public-private partnerships. That's a real public-private partnership. And again, I just couldn't be more pleased and look forward to actually going to visit one as soon as I can. Thank you for your leadership.
You go back there. There's a hand up right there, woman right there. Yes, you, right there? Yes? Yep. Ma'am.
Thank you. I'm so excited to be here to talk. I thought I was going to run out of time.
Please tell us your name and your affiliation.
My name is Adriana Grande, and I'm a student with ACC. In the past, I have worked interviewing applicants for various welfare programs in Texas. The large majority of them were women without education. In fact, I will be the first woman in my family to graduate from college. My question is, what can the Department of Education do to create more incentive for